Um, somebody back there?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Well, as usual, the, this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. Um, so we'll start off with open session. Anybody here for open session? Hi.
I am.
Well, come on up.
Okay.
You state your name and address when you do.
My name is Sharon Begley. I live on the corner of Streeter and Grimes Road.
Hi Sharon.
Hello. So, I'm here to find out what's going on, since I wasn't notified of any meetings of the planning board or the selectmen have been having. About opening, uh, trying to make Street or Road public. Since I am a butter, I own half the road for approximately four hundred feet.
Okay, Ryan, I don't know if you wanna kick us off here as far as, um, timeline, real quick, as far as when notifications went out, if you know offhand, all that, I know this is sort of, but, uh...
Sure, we, we had met about a, a citizen's petition that was put forth by the residents of Street or Road. Um, and then s- any subsequent discussions have been under discussions of that warrant article.
Why weren't all the, uh, butters and owners notified of these meetings? You could at least send a letter.
Uh, we couldn't, and I, I do believe we did try to contact you, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna argue the point. I did meet with you, uh, one-on-one.
Yeah, last week. It was kind of late. This has been going on since when? Last fall?
Hey Jamie.
Hi, sorry.
Started off with the planning board.
Sharon, November, September, August, September, October, somewhere in there.
Yeah, and the planning board never notified me. I just think it's very unprofessional for any of the boards in town to be, uh, you know, pla- planning on something, doing someone's, to someone's private land, and not even notifying them.
So, we're gonna have to, 'cause I remember at one of these meetings, that it was stated that somehow contact was tried to be made. I, I remember that. I don't know the details of it and whatnot. That's all I can do to start off the response, is to sort of say, okay, let's go back, and we're gonna have to try to figure out how we did try to notify you.
Yeah, but it's not up to Lori to come up to me, like, in an office, in the town, on the street, to say, hey, this is what's going on. It's up, it's up to all the boards in town to notify property owns of anything. If you're cutting down trees, uh, and that's another issue. You entered into the private way on September eleventh and graded the road, and you ripped out, uh, the Travis ripped out one of my property bounds. And, um, he put all the grimes from the road or all on top of the rest of my bounds and my intermediate bounds, and I can't find them. And I sent you a letter in, um, February, and what's the other date? I sent you two letters, February twenty-three, April thirteen. You haven't yet received a response. Because I'm not gonna go out there, it's almost four hundred feet, I'm not gonna go out there and, uh, remove all those grimes.
And it's so, you can, you can imagine it's difficult. We, you know, deal with a lot of stuff. It's difficult for us to just pull off the top, when you come in for open session like this, to just pull off the top and us remember dates and letters and specifically who went out and all that, so it, 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 it's a little difficult for us to really answer a lot of these questions.
Well, I did send you the letters, and I know you've received the letters.
Sure.
Because they were certified, and I asked for reply and never got one.
Okay, so...
Didn't, didn't Travis, um, they, they took care of all that at the time after the...
No, he did. He came out with the metal detector, and he found one of the bound that he pulled out, he found, and he put it on the back of the, the truck and handed it out and put it back in the hall. But I still can't find my bounds. I don't have a metal detector. And I spent money on plants alongside my property line. And if you had notified me beforehand, uh, that you were gonna come onto private property, I would've been out there showing where all the bounds were and told you to stay away from them. But it's like, oh, we just do whatever we want. I don't get, I don't get it.
Are the bounds, are the bounds in the middle of the road? If you say you own, they're on the edge?
No, they're not in the middle of the road. I spent money, out of all the people up there, they wanna make this a public road. I'm the only person that sent, spent my own personal money to hire a lawyer to do a title search. I hired a surveyor to survey it. I hired, um, the, uh, extra five hundred dollars for a plan, and it costs seventy-five dollars, um, to file it down at the courthouse. Now, I'm the only one that's done my part of to make this road public. Where's everybody else? Why don't they survey their property? You know, take some responsibility for your own property, for your own land. You know, why dump everything on all the taxpayers of Hubbardston? You know, what's his entitlement? I don't get it. So now the next thing I'm looking at, there's an article that's going on the, the town meeting, uh, to make that, to vote to make that road public, which I didn't know about it, and a lot of the information that's in the article is not true. It states here, "All abutting landowners of Street or Road have agreed to convey their respective interest in Street or Road to the town of Hubbardston for no consideration."
That, that was a citizen petition, though.
So, well, that's not true.
Sharon, we discussed this in my office. The, the citizen's petition is not, that, that's something, if you get enough signatures, by procedure, you're allowed to put that on the warrant, and it's not allowed to...
Even though it's not true.
It's not allowed to be touched, so you, you have to reach a certain signature threshold.
Can't, you guys can't pull it?
We cannot.
Yeah, it's not a citizen petition, you can't, no.
Okay. And also, it says on this, "The road will be accepted, shown on a plan to..." A plan? There's no plan. Where's the plan? How can you vote on a, there's, there's no plan. How do you do that?
So that article was written by the citizens, who, it's a public record and you can access it. It was written by the citizens who submitted it.
Yeah.
And I, I even asked legal counsel if we could clean the language up, or it's just not allowed to be touched.
Mm-hmm.
If you get enough votes, you can put anything on town. The town meeting is the deciding body in, in, in municipality.
Well, I, I really don't think it should be like that. I think if, if you're gonna put something on for a vote, it should be true. You shouldn't just make up things and, and just put on whatever you want.
But... But that, that's the law, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna debate the state law.
Yeah, okay. So, are you gonna answer and respond to any of my letters?
Oh, and just one other thing too. So, as, as much as you're coming in here sort of guns blazing saying, "My information is correct," there's a whole nother side that's going, "No, no, no, our information is correct." So, just us taking on your, or your word, your word here, your strongly worded words, um, you know, we can't just do that either. So, there's a, a lot of differing opinion on this issue.
I have, I have proof.
They do too, you know, so this is, this is, and I, we, we...
Okay.
So Sharon, my, my suggestion to you is why don't we put you on the agenda for the next meeting?
Agreed.
Where we can actually be prepared to answer some of your questions, rather than just have you, um, wanting responses now, which I don't think we can happily answer.
Well, I would, I would also, I would, I would, in the meantime, I would like you to, um, respond to my letter, so I can give it to my lawyer.
Wait, can I see the letter?
It's in your, right there, on the left side.
The one we just sent in?
On the left side.
Left side. I want the response to the grime.
The April twenty-fifth letter.
Can I make a comment on the grinding? Is that from snow plowing?
No, it's from grading the road, a private road. It's a private road. Why are you grading it?
Were those grimes on the road?
Yes, so the residents of Street or Road paid to put the grimes on there.
Originally, okay.
Originally. And when the grader went by and graded it, pushed them all over onto my property, and buried my land bounds. I can't find them now.
Good, uh, the residents, uh, I see the first paragraph, it says about, um, the gates, how the road was gated. This room was jammed with all the residents, and a lot of them, or some of them had said that it was, uh, I'd read that it was used for a hundred and ten years, open to the, to the town.
No, it was just a wood, it was just a woodlot.
So, I, I don't have the letter in front of me.
It was a cut, it was a cutway. I used to do better assessments. I saw the actual description of the road back in the, it was in, done in calligraphy down at the courthouse.
So, I, I don't have the letter in front of me, but there was a letter recently in response to this, um, when you had received, I don't know if you have it in your email.
I did. Keep, keep stalling.
When you, when you had received, uh, a notice trespass from Lovewell Pond. This was maybe two thousand seven-ish, uh, and you clearly wrote back to them that this is a public way.
Right, but it, it's not a public way. If you, if I can't walk on the road, it's not a public way.
So, where, where did this all of a sudden change, where you argued with Lovewell Pond Association, that Street or Pond, Street or Road is in public way, which you wrote?
It, I said, if it's supposed to be a, a public way, how come...
No, no, you wrote, "It is a public way."
How come, how come people can't walk on it?
It's on there. There's a couple pages, 'cause there's a, the police department letter.
Dear Sharon, this is what, two thousand seven, "Dear Sharon, had you been seen trespassing on Lovewell Pond Sporting Club Incorporated property on Thursday, July ninth, two thousand seven?
Yes.
You have been vertically notified in the past that LPSC property is private property, and there is no trespassing by any persons who are not members of LPSC and not guests of a member. The property is posted with signs clearly visible on Street or Road and Grimes Road. Let this serve as notice you are not welcome in any LPSC property except over Street or Road. If any further violation occurs by either of you or any appointed by you the local law enforcement authority shall be notified." And then your response, this is from August third, two thousand seven, "We, Edward Turnowski and Sharon Begley would like the members of Lovewell Pond Sporting Club to know that today, August third, two thousand seven, receives a letter from Donna Russell, the clerk of your sporting club, accusing us of someone who has seen trespassing on Lovewell Pond Sporting Club property in July nineteenth, two thousand seven. On that date, we were walking on Street or Road, and your club president, Representative Peter Russell, was driving down the road behind us, stopped, said he saw us in your private property. According to the town of Hubbardston, the causeway is part of a public way, which is known as Street or Road." We are not on your...
According to the town, not according to me.
Well, it worked in your favor there, didn't it?
You're using your defense here.
Yeah, but I'm watching, but it, but it's, it's...
Certainly worked in your favor. "We are not on your private property. You continue to verbally harass us, and now we have received a letter of false accusation threatening local law enforcement and legal action against us from Lovewell Pond Sporting Club. I, Sharon Begley, have been driving and walking within this area, Street or Road, for over thirty years, and my husband, Egler Turnowski," I'm sorry if I mispronounced that.
No, that's okay.
"For twenty-four years, we have never been verbally notified in the past that Street or Road is private property. We are filing a complaint against the Sporting Club and Hubbardston Police Department." So, in two thousand seven, it worked to your benefit to call it a public road, and now all of a sudden that the, the residents...
No, I did not call it a, I said, the town called it a public road. I don't agree it's a public road, because how can it be a public road if the people didn't sign off to open it to the public?
She, we just heard the letter, okay, so...
I don't agree with, uh, uh, it doesn't, it says the town says it's open. You say it's open. I don't agree that it's open.
Your own letter? Okay, well, I think, just to defer it, we can, I, we'll do it as long as you want, absolutely, uh, as you're right. But I think it's more productive if we do what Michael had suggested, which is to get, you know, um, a, a set agenda item, and have you come in here, and we can, we can, um, have a little bit more information, be able to go through things more thoroughly with exact dates and the dates of these letters that we just read and all that other stuff, if that's okay with you. You can work with Ryan and Lori to sort of...
I'll see. I would like a response to my letter, though.
Ed.
The grinding letter and the other letter, please.
Are you suggesting that, uh, the townspeople should not make, make it a public road? Is that what you're suggesting?
No, I'm not against that. I'm suggesting that I believe they should take responsibility for their own property and do the repairs that it needs, and then the town can vote. It needs a lot of work. There's a utility pole that needs to be moved. There's no guard rail across the causeway. Uh, at least that I know, one car is driven off it. The culvert that g- goes through there, uh, has a hundred percent section loss at one end. The other one has a BB deterrent that shouldn't be maintained, it's not. The, um, there's stone walls need to be removed, trees need to be cut down. There's no country drainage.
Well, the easiest, like, for the town to do is not do anything to it and let, leave it be private, and, uh, you, you, private owners can...
You know? It is private. It's a private road, but...
Yeah, well, but if, 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 if the town takes the easy route, they don't have to make it public, and then you, you private owners can always take care of it. It won't cost the town or us taxpayers anything.
Yeah, but, you know, people, they should do it the right way. It's like they're doing it backwards. You know, vote for, vote to accept the road without any plan. That's still, that, uh, it's still, you know, it costs...
Yeah, but they're, they're only acting...
Yeah.
On a citizen petition, which is put forth with thirty signatures, and they have to put it on, and they have to act accordingly to it.
Right.
You know, it's not like they put it on, so, um, so you're suggesting that it maybe should just remain a private road, I guess?
Doesn't have to ma- remain a pri- but it's up to the, the, it's up to the owners to, to upgrade it to the specifications of the town and then get it voted in.
So, the owners, just to kind of keep you up to speed, the owners went to the planning board, who has ultimate authority over what can be accepted or not. And the planning board, with their engineer, evaluated the road and felt that it was in the condition it was in, that they would allow the acceptance of the road should they put a citizen petition forth, um, as is.
So, that means the town has to pay for, uh, the moving utility pole, all the lawyer's fees, title searches, survey, bounds, everything, yeah?
I'm just telling, I'm telling you with the, with the, what, the planning board has had said that the road can be accepted in the condition as is.
Okay. Okay, I guess I'm finished here. I'll just take the next step. So, thank you very much.
Sounds good. Okay.
Okay, and I, can I get that you will send me a response to those letters?
You, you will get a response, um, you, you will get a response and a, and a request to join us again.
About the grindings and the other... Okay. When's the, when's the, uh, town meeting?
June fifth?
June fifth.
June fifth, okay. Thank you very much.
Would you like to come back and meet with you for that, so we can...
Uh, I'm not sure if I'll be able to. That's why I want a response to the, from the letter, so I can give it to my lawyer. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else here for open session? No? Okay, so next item on the agenda is, uh, the toll booth.
I'm gonna stay from this, yeah, as I'm a new member.
Yeah.
Congratulations. Tom, how you doing?
Very good. How about yourself?
Good.
So, obviously, I was here before, and I believe Ryan did his due diligence to find out what we can and can't do.
So, we downloaded the, uh, Lions' insurance policy, sent that to town council for review. Town council said it, it did meet necessary standards to hold this type, but in order to further protect the town, they wanted, um, they wanted an access agreement, which I sent to Tom. It would need to be adapted, so it's not ready yet, but it is here, uh, and drafted. This would essentially grant them access to a particular piece of land to conduct this, and then, um, that land would then be covered by the insurance. So, it's just an additional protection for the town in order to allow, um, entering into the, the street.
Was there any discussion of, um, uh, private property, meaning the, or the restriction from keep, keeping the, 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 the toll booth operation to the private way?
Yes, to town-owned land.
Yes, so that's just in there somewhere, that's it.
Yeah, that strongly recommend that we hold it to town-owned land only.
Right.
And also limit access to the street in order to just solicit money in that way.
Okay, so, uh, it had, has this been brought up to, to the chiefs again yet? I know it had originally, but did it need to be brought up again? 'Cause I, I know they were both in favor of it.
Yep, they were both in favor. The way we left it with the chief was, before we did the event, we'd go through exactly everything we were gonna do.
Okay.
And have him approve of the cones, all the traffic details, exactly how everything would work.
Yeah.
And he said he was fine with doing that.
Can we, can we use town stuff? Can you, you know, I suppose you don't own traffic cones, do you? You might, actually.
I believe we do. I believe we do. 'Cause they, they did this before, so I believe they have everything. We'll check, make sure everything's up to current standards.
Okay, great, so what's, what's next?
So, the policy you have in place right now bans this activity?
Yeah.
Should be voting to, um, to waive that ban for this particular event, and also authorizing me to sign the agreement with the Lions unless you wanted to sign the contract ag- again later, the access agreement or the additional insurance.
Okay, I feel like we've pretty well vetted this.
Yeah. All right, so I'll make a motion to, so that against, so we're, we're abolishing the old...
Just on this case?
Waiving it for this...
Waiving it for this one, and then we're coming...
For one, um, Lions' club event, in fiscal, or say, calendar eighteen or fiscal nineteen.
Okay.
The, the police department said, I believe, a two-year trial. I don't know if you wanna go with that, or you wanna do something.
So, are we just allowing Lions? Is that...
I, I would say that what we vetted is allowing this one event and see how it goes, and then I can see.
'Cause I don't think it'll stand up long-term if we just say only the Lions are allowed to do it.
All right.
Right, it's, so it's waiving the policy for...
For this...
For this particular trial, and then...
Okay, okay. All right, so we'll do, um, I'll make a motion to waive the current, uh, boot drive policy to allow the Lions' club to hold an event for a two-year trial period in two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen. So, make that motion, then I'm gonna do another one to allow you to sign it.
A second. Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
And I'll make another motion to allow, or, uh, Ryan McLean or town administrator to, um, have signing authority on that, uh...
Access.
On the access.
I'll sec- I'll second the motion.
Discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes. All right.
Thank you very much.
How many visits did it take? Three, three, four visits?
We'll pick a date. I'll run that by the, the chief, and then as soon as I get the date, then I can print everything out, and I'll bring it to you, and we can sign everything.
I'll get this adopted, and you come to one of your meetings. I don't even know if that's allowed.
Ha.
Nice to see you.
Yep, no, you can definitely come.
Are you, um, you're, you're gonna do like a rain date thing, or is it, you have to pick a day and go with that?
We'll probably pick a day and go with that, and then...
Think you'd do well if it was raining.
Okay, all right.
Very good.
It's a little rare that it's raining.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Good luck here. Don't do it on Street or Road.
Delicate.
Sugar, salt, it won't melt.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
You should be, be welcome to stop by and let the toll roll.
Sure we will. So Travis isn't here yet, huh?
So, yeah, we'll skip that. Travis is coming?
Uh, he's, I'm gonna speak for him.
All right.
So, the, um, the culvert work that's being done on, on Route sixty-two, a bus and turnpike, um, necessitates a detour. This is the only way trucks can get through town. So Travis is asking for is a, a lift on the bands for Berry and Elm Street. He can't, uh, promise that this will take one construction season, but that, that is the target, so it would be lifting, uh, the band for a set amount of time. You could say a year. You could say six months, one construction season, uh, in order to allow the detour to happen, so that they can get this, this work done.
Yeah, for as long as it takes to get the project done. I did attend that meeting with Mass DOT and the engineering Travis. And, uh, yeah, I think it's a great idea, 'cause it's like sixteen point five miles to go around. You'd have to go through Rutland and Oak, oh, Barry.
Yeah, there's no easy way.
Oakham, Rutland. I mean, it's just...
Yeah, this is...
You're also not allowed to post a detour through another town.
Yeah, and it's, yeah, it's...
Without authorization. And then there's state roads involved, and there's a lot of different, still, this is not gonna be received well.
Yeah, I mean, I remember when trucks were allowed to go on Berry Road. I mean, I never lived there on Berry Road, but, I mean, for years, there was always truck traffic on that road.
But, but, I mean, the point is, we have to do this. I mean, the, the other, you, we run the risk of having the major conduit in town, one of them fail.
Yeah.
So, um, this is after extensive DOT bridge reports and, and scour analysis and all that stuff, so, yeah.
So, are they gonna shut that road down? Uh, for the project? Hmm. It's, it's a possibility. So, it could be shut down for possibly a year? Hope not. No, I know, but it's a po- possibility.
So, my, my opinion, I, I mean, I've done plenty of culvert projects.
Yeah.
You can, you can have influence, where you say, look, we can't.
Get it done, yeah, exactly.
Either or, you know what I mean? So, you figure it out, have some earth retention system in the middle of the roadway, do half of it, you know, there's just, there's ways to do it.
Mm-hmm.
I think they wanted to just leave the window open, you know, you never know with, with nature.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, they're probably done in a year, but if, you know, there was a huge flood or something, you know, you just don't know what Mother Nature's gonna do. But it, it is a forty-foot span and a twenty-foot span, so there's substantial...
Yep.
Open bottom culverts going in there.
All right, so I'll make a motion to, uh, lift the truck ban on Berry Road and Elm Street during the, for the duration of the project. So, we don't wanna lift it now, 'cause the project's not started, right, for the duration of the Route sixty-two culvert repair project.
And I guess what, what defines, um, project, right?
Hmm.
Um...
When Mass DOT needs it, it's that.
Sure, 'cause there's gonna be so much, there'll be activity with survey, there'll be all sorts of stuff. We don't necessarily need to close for that, no.
No. Uh, how about, just on advice of the, uh, DPW director?
Yeah, sure, and he does not wanna do this either, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
But he feels we have to in order to protect that road.
Okay, so another easy motion for Lori?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Do they put codes over the, you know, signs that are there?
The, uh, the black...
Probably.
Some trash bags, right?
All right, so we get to finalize the STM and ATM warrants?
Uh, we do. Which one do you wanna start with?
Special's right in front of us, so...
Yeah, it is.
All right, there were, um, from the last time we reviewed this, there's been a few minor changes.
You always say that.
Call attention to you. Uh, the first two articles, uh, took out two thousand seventeen applications. Um, all this work was done in eighteen, so this is a passed bill. That wording would've complicated, complicated the process, um, required a, and potentially put us up to a challenge for a nine-tenths vote when it wouldn't be necessary, so... Uh, these bills were incurred in two thousand eighteen and can be paid in a special town meeting. We just took out the date. Uh, nothing changed in three, four. Scenic roads, there was a couple changes to the numbering. Um, as you can see, each section thirty point one, and if there's any subsections to the bylaw, just change them to be consistent. No structural changes. Article six, if you go to page thirteen of the warrant, it says, "To twenty point four certificate to generate." Uh, we had a little discussion about this the last time. It says, "The planning board may revoke the certificate to generate for cause at a public hearing." Just wanted to read council's... They said, "Please note that the term for cause is vague and not defined in the existing bylaw, or this proposed amendment, and a zoning context cause to revoke a permit can only be failure to comply with zoning or terms of permit approval. So, I recommend striking this specific amendment or replacing for cause with for failure to comply with any provisions of the zoning bylaws or terms and conditions of a permit issued pursuant to these zoning bylaws."
That makes sense. I mean, it's saying the same thing, it's just, it's just spelling it out.
Um, I did call...
Ben?
The chairman of the planning board, Ben Ritchie, and he said, um, he understood, and that, uh, during the public hearing, he would bring, call that out specifically and see if, uh, public wanted to change and could do that at town meeting. Uh, he felt it should stay as it is now, because the hearing hasn't happened yet.
Okay.
That's it on that item. No change to seven, eight, nine, four, ten, um, or eleven or twelve. I did ask again in article eleven if, uh, there was any banning done by article twenty-two of the commercial marijuana establishments. If we do ban anything in town because we're a yes-town for marijuana by ballot, we need to have another ballot. They said, "Based off the reading of it, as it's written now, we do not need another ballot. There's no ban in there. It needs to be voted on." Just wanted to be sure, 'cause that could be a surestopper.
Okay.
And that is the only changes to the special town meeting warrants.
Do you want a motion to accept it, as presented?
Uh, yeah, so we need to get this, we would be getting this to the printer tomorrow, um, and we need to sign it tonight, so we would be accepting and signing it.
I'll make a motion to accept the special town meeting warrant as presented.
I'll start in the discussion. On favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, we'll sign it after. Do you wanna sign it now or at the end?
Yes.
Here is this one. This is, uh...
You can sign it, so...
Here's a black one.
Keep it the same.
I'm lucky I'm here not signing too many things. Hey Dan, can you come in?
There's your pen. All right, so for the annual town meeting warrant, I think I'll, I'll start with the budget, which is attached as a, attaches an attachment?
Yes, right up here.
So, if you look at the, if you walk through the cover sheet with me, which is this, this document here.
Yep.
The snow and ice deficit, I had put that in there last time because it was a known number, although there's still a possibility that we would need to spend the snow and ice budget, hopefully not. Um, we did find that the Quabbin School Assessment from last year reduced after town meeting, which means we voted a certain amount of money in, and then we never adjusted the budget. So, there's some, there's some extra funds in the two thousand eighteen budget, so we're gonna put that towards the remainder of the snow and ice and essentially kill the snow and ice budget and not carry that into next year's tax levy.
That was thir- thirty-something?
Thirty-five thousand. So, that, um, added to our revenue pool, and then there were some expenditure changes that I'd like to call out. The, um, we're still in negotiation with the unions, but we added money to the DPW and police unions with a number that we're comfortable with in order to cover the changes to the, um, union assessments.
Where are we now? What page should we be looking at?
So, this would be, I guess... Second page of the budget.
Police wages?
The police wages is one line, and then the third page of the budget, we'd be looking at DPW wages and then winter wages.
And then you said winter wages?
Yes. Give you the exact line. It's called highway winter outside wages. No, employee overtime is what it's called.
Okay.
And then, uh, the Quabbin assessment, based off the house budget that passed, went down by seven point seven thousand, which is a small but welcomed change. This was added or reduced in the budget. This was added or reduced in the budget. Uh after speaking with the schools, th- they were also comfortable with that reduction. Uh the, uh met with the auditors, which will be in my report, um we had previously agreed to pay nineteen thousand for the audit, it was budgeted at eighteen five as an unknown number, so I added five hundred to cover the cost of that in fiscal nineteen. And then um we just paid for veteran flags for Memorial Day, apparently that's been under budgeted for a little while, so I added, I changed that line item by a hundred dollars to make sure we're covering that bill, cause we had to transfer line items, it's a hundred dollar, or fifty dollar change. So the highlights of these changes, we are in balance, in all contracts are tentatively settled. Um I also reduced the free cash input into the budget by twenty thousand, uh twenty-two thousand, excuse me. So we're now down to a hundred and twenty-three thousand to help with those um unfunded debt costs. And then um our our free cash allowance went up with that reduction of snow and ice, so we have more free cash.
So if we go back to page one here, this thing, this is the one that's toggling much.
So that is um, that is what includes our budget, the surplus, the free cash, and how the free cash is spent by the capital budget and all warrant articles.
And Melanson.
And then we did receive the Melanson check for seventy-five thousand as in our possession, it will not be certified until next year, but I included that number, as you can see about where we are for a free cash carryover.
Okay. Almost there.
So those are the, the budget changes, and then I'll just go through the warrant, we'll hit the budget again. So articles one, this is on page one of the annual town meeting warrant. Articles one, two, three, four, five, six. Did not change. Alright, if this, if this. Stop me if you need to, in article seven, this is the budget article, so we, we took out the chart that had the numbers in it, in case they change. Uh this will be done by motion, and there'll be no change to the way the moderator does the budget. It's just the, we go through by line, and the moderator, it, it was in the chart by category. So it's not taken out, it's just called out specifically that the budget will be attached to the warrant as appendix A, and that can be changed by motion. And then the union contracts, which what used to be article thirteen, are now rolled into this, and it's specifically stated that the increases in the budget are are reflected in there for those contracts, so we're covering both Master and Law one fifty E and the budget process.
Okay, so um. I'm just making sure that I understand how we've, we've entered into agreement with unions and then reflected that approved agreement into the budget article?
We are uh hoping to have it approved into the budget, and it's, it's baked into the budget, so to speak, right now. If that was to change, we could reverse that by motion at town meeting.
Okay, so this no, this doesn't put us in it.
We're just trying to get to where we're, we think we're going to be, or we're pretty sure we're gonna be, if we had to, we could back out of it by a mo- by a motion.
Which would say, I'm just, so I understand it, basically, if if final stages of negotiation didn't go as planned and what was in on the printer and submitted and on the floor at town meeting, and somebody had to make a motion, like one of us, to reflect some small change, that's what we're talking about?
Yes, or the moderator can make that motion.
Or the moderator, okay.
And specifically call it out that this is changing from the printed warrant, and make sure everybody understands.
And then that obviously has an effect on the rest of the budget.
Correct.
Okay. Okay.
Uh no change to articles eight, nine. Article ten. So we asked at the last meeting if you wanted to do um a borrowing or a a capital exclusion. So this language is consistent with the capital exclusion, so this is a one-year increase in taxes uh to purchase a dump truck for two hundred thousand dollars.
I I I've just been uncomfortable, this is the first time Travis put it out, and I don't think we should ask voters for it, but. I mean, I'd rather see the library thing win and pass than a dump truck.
I agree.
Yeah, they got some pretty good equipment down there.
I think so.
In the libraries, working pretty hard.
And they just got one new truck, you know, last year.
I I'm I'm just bothered, and not bothered by Travis, I think Travis did a great job, please, nobody take that the wrong way.
I know if you heard about our winter, he did a fabulous job down there.
Yeah, DPW was fantastic this year.
Crazy.
So with the move to a hundred percent salt was a good, good way to go.
Yeah, and just the sort of second year on the job sort of thing too, but we got so mad, I mean, it was, whatever, if you were here driving up and down the street going, oh my god.
We we were, we were for once, Ed, the best town in the area.
May- maybe I'll stay next one, or just to check it out.
Oh, yeah, I think.
Kudos, kudos to the highway department.
No, they did great, but I'm just, I'm just.
Anyway.
It's nice that it could be done.
I'm just bothered that last year, you know, we have no other truck needs, this is the one we need, we get this, and we're gonna be all set, and I realize things happen, but nothing substantially happened to this truck in the past year, other than it's old, it's still working. Um yeah, there's some maintenance costs on it, but I I don't know, I I feel uncomfortable asking our voters this year for two hundred thousand, we just started paying on another truck. I'd rather put this off a year or two, and when we've paid off some of the other one, we're paying off one from fourteen, which isn't paid off till next year. We started one la- this year for our first payment for the one we bought last year, so I I'd like to see one get off the rolls before we start putting another one on the rolls.
Yeah, I agree with that.
And his, you know, in his defense, uh we really sort of already said this uh before, and and uh I think in some of, in his mind, um, well, not his mind, what he actually said was was, some of this has to do with thinking of all departments at once, right? So there are no cruisers on here, for example, there's no, so you know, so it seemed to maybe be a year where it would be more palatable versus having three or four different things on at once, you know, so.
A cruiser, a fire truck, or whatever.
Right.
So the the one, um, not speaking for Travis, but the the one benefit is, if you were to add it to the debt, let's say, and borrow for it next year, you still wouldn't have a funding source, so you'd be including whatever the borrowing amount is, thirty-five fifty into the debt section of the budget, without without a revenue source. So what a debt exclusion does is it gives you the revenue. Uh we won't, we won't have room next year, uh based on current calculations, to add a borrowing amount to debt without, again, using free cash or some type of injection.
I I just.
Uh so this was, it's a lot of compromise, but it's just a way to clear that slate, cause it's gonna be asked for next year.
Yeah. No.
Right, and I I get the the funding mechanism, I just, I just, myself, I don't wanna ask the taxpayers to do a debt exclusion on on the truck this year, that's just my opinion.
And previously, uh some, some trucks were bought with chapter ninety money. And, you know, the finance committee always had a little problem with that, because they figured chapter ninety was meant for the roads and to make the roads better, but uh
Yeah.
It was, did we get significant chapter ninety money enough to?
We have about the same chapter ninety that we've had for all the years, I mean, a little bit of an increase, but Travis has a pretty aggressive road plan.
But it. Yes.
That he's trying to keep all that money just to put into asphalt and roads and things.
As well as the 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 supportive grants, like the strap grant for the next fiscal, that's got a bunch of different roads in it too, so it's a really good plan, you know, with with, you know, to the penny sort of thing, so.
Right.
Yeah, I wouldn't support using chapter ninety money for the trucks, I'd rather see the roads get fixed.
Yeah. I don't know. What should we do, should we take a, make a, strike it, should we?
I don't know, I mean, myself, I'd rather see the library succeed this year, and I think you'd have a bigger chance of the library roof replacement succeeding, if you didn't see your two hundred thousand dollar truck, and you'd, that a hundred thousand dollar library.
Yeah. And I understand where Travis is coming from, you know, I'd want the, all the best equipment I could have too, but he's got some decent equipment, and you're exactly right, the library, you know, people see this, and they just say, no, no, you know, be frustrated and but I think the library is pretty important, I hate to see that get shot down.
And but then there's the other side, which is, look, people, if they don't want it.
Yeah.
Then go for it.
Yeah.
Does a li- library call uh qualify for uh CPA funds?
This is in addition to that, you'll see, you'll see in a couple articles, we'll explain it to you in a second.
Yeah. There is a CPA article for that also.
But not enough to cover the whole roof.
No, half, it's the, the roof's about two hundred thousand, they were covering a hundred thousand in change.
Yeah.
And then there's grants out there they can get, but they can't go for the grants until it's a approved funded project, so they're asking for a hundred thousand dollars of town money to fund it, but that may, some or all of that may be covered by grants, they just don't know until after they.
Why couldn't they do like they did with some of their other projects, uh uh you know, they borrow the money and go out five years and take CPA monies for five years and get it that way.
That's what they're doing that, they're doing that on the hundred.
To the whole. It's two hundred and thirty-three thousand, so it's patching together many sources.
The whole. They couldn't do the whole two hundred and thirty-three.
No, the CPA committee voted to, they have other fun, projects they wanna fund, so they're not funding the whole library.
There's two other CPA questions, one for the, you'll see it, but the the spring church again.
Yep.
And the first parish.
So. I'm sorry, I shouldn't comment. So we're gonna fund, we're.
Oh, it's already been said.
Yeah.
We're gonna fund a private church over funding our library?
That's what my thought was, but.
We can get to the church.
Sorry.
Yeah.
Historical preservation of the church.
Hmm.
Please wait to be called on, sir.
Yeah. Alright, so I'm, I I'm gonna make a motion, just cause I feel strongly about it, but you guys, I'd, if you vote to keep it, totally fine, um I'm gonna make a motion to uh strike article ten from the town meeting warrant.
You can call second that.
Discussion? In favor? Yes?
Yes.
Animus.
No change to article eleven, uh twelve, thirteen or fourteen. Uh article fifteen, there was, uh there was a change, so in order to get everything consistent in in all the ballot questions and anything to do with the library, I changed it to replacing the Hubbardson Public Library roof as the purpose of the funding. That way, everything stays the same and is consistent, I had some different language in there. This, so everything is the same, so that's what changed there, there's no substantial change to it, except that everything is the same, and um legal liked it better to have it all equal.
So this is a hundred and thirty-three thousand from CPA?
Hundred and thirty-three thousand, so thirty-three thousand from the desi- undesignated reserve and five years of borrowing a hundred thousand, or twenty thousand a year. This has been embedded, the borrowing language and the CPA language both have been embedded. Articles sixteen and seventeen, um a significant chunk of language was added by council. I will read it to you directly. In, it's at the bottom, in to authorize a board of selectmen to acquire historic preservation restriction from said church, provided further that the town shall not enter in any grant agreement or disperse any fund for this project until the CPC makes a determination that said grant is eligible for funding under the standards established by the decision issued by the Massachusetts Supreme Judicial Court in Kaplan versus the Town of Acton. So this is what we talked about, uh in terms of uh whether or not public money can be used to restore a church, or to to assist in a church. Uh this language um gets at that. It was added to both sixteen and seventeen.
And seventeen, so so, just so you know what's going on, so fifteen was for the library roof for a hundred and thirty-three thousand CPA, CPC whatever, sixteen was a hundred thousand for a day spring church, seventeen, seventy-six thousand, six twenty for first parish Unitarian church, so three substantial projects.
What's the Unitarian church, or, I mean, we already gave them, what, seventy-five thousand before?
Yeah, it's for the roof repairing and replacing the roof for the first parish church.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you kindly.
I got the last one.
Yeah, so the the, these were the three projects the CPA uh put forward.
Should I continue?
Yes.
Okay, sorry.
Is the order of the uh, are they, are they all done at one time, or are they done individually?
Individually, we put the library first over the other two.
Article eighteen is the uh library capital exclusion. So uh this again was changed to a capital outlay of um one hundred thousand for one year, so increasing taxes for one year in order to provide enough funding for a hundred thousand to pay for the library roof. And um the note was changed also to reflect that there'll be a ballot question about this.
Okay.
There's no changes to nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three. Or twenty-four, twenty-five, uh there was an order change, you asked me to put the library at at the top, article eighteen, and uh just two street or road articles were split in order.
Okay.
And moved towards at the end of the warrant, uh also, there used to be a thirteen, that was the union stuff, so all the numbers have shifted up one, just to be aware of that. And that, that is the annual town meeting warrant.
Alright.
So do you think we should leave article twenty-five alone?
I think, uh, there's too many unknowns here at this point. Be- because of, because of what may or may not be voted under article twenty-four?
Well, I would say if article twenty-four fails, then you just skip article twenty-five.
Just make a motion to pass it over?
Yeah.
But even if it does pass, is it?
Council had some questions as to whether or not twenty-four would hold.
Legally?
Because the town process is that the the road is laid out first, and then easements are granted, and then there's a public hearing about whether or not the town should be accepted, and then the selectman can accept it, and then go to town meeting for vote, so this essentially skips all of that. So even if it did pass, I'm not sure, and and council didn't specifically say yes or no, but they had some questions as to whether or not it would even hold up.
I would say, leave them alone and see what the discussion comes to.
My only thing is, is this, this twenty thousand is just a preliminary number, in my view. Um, once they start this process, what is the the actual number gonna be on this?
Well, we got some quotes.
No, I know, but when with Zox, between legal and laying it all out, those are just basic preliminary quotes, not to complete the whole project, basically, to get it s- laid out and started.
I think that was the whole thing, I think that's all they needed to do, no?
Yeah. No, I don't, I don't think it was, I I may be wrong, but I think there's a lot.
Well, it's just a survey, right, it's not like gra- you mean, there's no gravel or drainage?
No, 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 they're just setting bounds, um in the legal work, but I believe that doesn't, he he quoted so much per bound, but
Just survey.
They didn't know how many bounds and and every, I think there's a lot of unknowns here.
Well, no, I think it was, it was like seven thousand for the legal, and about seventy-eight thousand for
The survey.
The survey, and then we, that came out to like fifteen or sixteen, and we had another five or so to it to.
Right, but you're right, I mean, we don't.
We don't know.
No, I mean, it could be forty thousand by the time this whole t- thing is done, so they'd have to go back to the town and ask for more money.
We did have. You know, the price per bound.
Yeah, exactly.
That was on there, and we could probably sort of see how many properties there are and get to see whe- whether we're in, um.
There's like twenty-four residents, twenty-five homes.
I don't know.
So each would have a two bounds on each lot, or actually, it'd be two, two bound, but one the bound would cover two lot, you know what I mean? So it's like maybe twelve on each side or something.
They're about two hundred bucks apiece.
They were two hundred, yeah.
The finance committee um is not recommending this article for that reason, um they think the legal will far exceed what what we're appropriating.
I I, I mean, it's up to you guys, my my original opinion on this originally, when they came to us, was that we basically told them, yeah, we're all for it, but it was their initiative to to foot the bill for all this, and then somehow it got turned around where the town's gonna foot the bill.
Well, it's because they went to the planning board, the planning board said.
Exactly, but.
I mean, so now we're sorta.
But I I don't see where the town all of a sudden became responsible for doing all this work. I don't know, that's just my opinion.
No, I hear ya, I know, and we talked about it before, it's the fact that, you know, the taxpayers, they've been paying taxes in this town for.
But so aren't any of the other household that's on a private road, you know?
Yep.
And the funny thing is too, there could be like a possible subdivision off a street or road, so say, you know, this gets approved, it's a dirt road. You drive down a dirt road, then there'll be a subdivision that has to abide by all the rules and pave roads and curbs, but you'd have to drive to a dirt road to get to a subdivision.
But, yeah, how would that hold up if the town, they basically released any subdivision rules to accept that road, but then if somebody wants to put a subdivision in there, and they say you have to do all this and that, and they come back and say, well, you just waived the whole right on this whole road for that, I don't, maybe there is no standing on it, but you could create a problem, I think. You know, why do we have to make this up to subdivision standards when the road you just accepted isn't?
Well, see, we don't have to answer that one, you know what I mean? It's, it's another entity, um, which makes this tricky.
No, I know. So. It's up to you guys, that's just my opinion.
Do you wanna strike twenty-five and see what happens with twenty-four? You mean, come back in the fall if we need to?
I mean, that's, that's what I would do. If it does pass, then ask the town if they, if they voted to accept the road, come back in the fall.
Alright, so if they vote to accept the road, then we get
Hard quotes.
more hard quotes for the, the process to do it and then come back in the fall to lay out the plan, the timeline, everything else, maybe.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
Cause then the vote's there, it's, it'll s- always be voted in.
It'll always be there.
And if it fails, then it's gone until it's brought up again, but
Sure.
Um, I don't know.
Well, I.
Alright, okay. So I'll make a motion to strike Article twenty-five at this time.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Can I ask a procedural question? Um, if CPA monies are on the, on the articles to be spent, and if they are voted down instead of, uh, approved, can those articles be transferred to another project? Or what, does that have to go back through the CPA and, uh, it has to come back before the town at another time?
Right, the CPC would have to reconsider it and bring it back to town meeting for vote.
So the only way those can be shipped around or anything is going back through the CPA and not done by the townspeople?
They can be voted on.
I think, I think I know what you're asking, I'd have to ask.
They, they can be voted down, but they can't be all let's say you wanted to increase one by
Same, repurposed on, on town floor.
Twenty thousand, is that possible to do?
Well, it's like, it's like if the Article sixteen for a hundred thousand for Day Spring Church was voted down, but then it was the increase, Article fifteen was revoted on to increase it by a hundred thousand. Right, that's what you're asking?
Well.
Yeah, I mean, directly.
It's a procedural question, I guess it comes back to more, you know, can the, can the, does the town have the authority, cause there's CPA funds?
Right. I don't know.
Does the town have authority to do that at town meeting? And as long as the article is there, are those articles fixed dollar-wise or, or can they be amended dollar-wise?
You almost need somebody with a
Yeah, I don't know that, I'd have to ask town council that question. And Ken, if you want me to.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Yeah, I, I do, I mean, you don't, you'd almost need somebody who had a pre-written legally vetted modification.
Well, can you go back?
To read.
So let's say sixteen and seventeen fail.
Yep.
Can, and, but we've already voted on fifteen, which is the hundred thirty-three thousand for the roof. Can the towns floor go back, strike that vote, and then re-vote fifteen with a higher number? I guess that's the question.
Or you change the order of the articles.
Change the order of the articles, make it last.
Well, we figured we'd put the library first originally because it's a town project.
I understand, that's the strategy.
And it's the only one for the town, so why, why put that last, but.
Alright, well, I don't think anything changes here, but.
Alright, yeah, it's No, it's a good question for, uh, for the, for Joel.
Yeah. Okay.
It could come up at town meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah, it probably will.
No homework, Ryan.
It's good, it's good to learn.
It's a good question.
We, we won't need legal after another year.
That's the idea.
Alright.
So what's left is, um, ballot questions, signing the warrant. With those amendments of striking.
Ten.
Twenty-five.
For ten and twenty-five. Okay.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the annual town meeting warrant as presented with the deletions of Article ten and Article twenty-five.
I'll second that. Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Just a procedural question for the board, the cover sheet with the line items for the budget, that'll be included in the warrant as attachment A, is there any, any other information that the board wants to include from all the budget presentations, anything? Is there anything else you wanna attach?
You include the whole budget though, right?
This cover sheet plus the, all the line items as shown in your packet.
Nope.
We'll be sending that out tomorrow.
Alright, counter the wire, well done.
It's exciting. So, uh, next we're talking ballot questions, so this is the last day you have to add something to the ballot, and you do need to vote in order, vote by two-thirds in order to add a ballot question to the ballot procedurally. Two questions before you are, two hundred thousand for the dump truck as a capital exclusion outlay and a hundred thousand for the library roof. Included is the summary written by, by town council, the concise summary, and then what a yes vote would do and what a no vote would do.
Okay, so question one goes away.
So question two is the new question one?
Right. Uh-oh.
You're getting shifty there, aren't ya?
I know.
Now you've lost me.
Yes.
Uh, so the other thing included in this is the, um, the board is allowed, or the board by regulation is going to advertise for yes and no uh, on this particular item, so someone who is for it, someone who is against it.
Here. Yep.
If you don't get someone for it or against it, then it has to go to council. So we're saying that if someone is interested in writing that opinion, they have till next week, uh, next Monday, in order to get that to, to, to my office, saying they're in, they're, um, interested in that, and then we'll have this to your next meeting on the twenty-first, that'll be the final time those can come in.
Okay.
And we will, if we don't have any, anything by next week, we'll have the town council prepare a vote.
Have you had any interest yet?
I'm guessing that, just a pure guess, the library board trustees will wanna write the four, um, and will help them, and then, I haven't heard anyone who's against it yet.
Library? Hmm.
But if, if not by law, the town council has to write it.
Okay.
What no means.
I'll make a motion to hmm, how do I do this? Um, strike question one for two hundred thousand dollars in real estate and personal taxes for equipping and purchasing a six-wheel dump truck. And approve question number two for the ballot for a hundred thousand dollars for the Hubbardson Public Library roof.
I'll second that motion. Recommend amendment to rename number two, number one?
I'll accept that amendment.
Second the motion. Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Alright, good.
Alright.
Yep. My report for you, so we met, I met with Eric, a town accountant to review end-of-year procedures, we'll have that, um, we believe at your, at your next meeting. Terms of, um, line item transfers, just to clean up eighteen and get it set for nineteen. Um, committed to completing the forecast, uh, by the end of the summer with, for public presentation in September, to include a capital plan and updated financial policies. So it's a lot of work for our finance team, but it's gonna set, set a, a concrete foundation for the FY twenty budget process. When I said FY twenty to Eric, he got really mad, so, he's like, let's get through nineteen first, but I'm trying to look forward as well. Building Department, I met with, um, Gardner and the Collin Center, we have a grant looking at regionalization. Uh, we have a report, it's, it's not ready for you to see yet, on what that would look like, what we're waiting for is what, what a number would be, what the finances would be.
Larry just retired him.
Yeah, I, I, I saw that when I was in Florida, would have liked to have been in his retirement, maybe.
So I've had many offline, uh, conversations with town administrators, we're in the same boat, um, building departments are tricky right now, there's not a lot of building inspectors. So what I'm recommending is that you add a discussion item to our next agenda, where we talk about some goals and priorities of, of what we want for the building department, so that we can structure options for you to choose. Uh, one being a, a Gardner Center of Regionalization, another continuing the way we've been going with some modifications or, um, a shared services agreement within the town.
Is there any way we can get, get some stats for that meeting? And I, I, nothing crazy detail, but just, you know, how many permits are issued per year, you know, it's, it's hard to fully comprehend how big of an effort that is.
I have that, we'll, we'll get that too. That's part of what UMass is doing for us, is they're analyzing our department.
Okay, great. Okay.
Hmm, great.
Uh, but, but it's just why you have a discussion, it's, um, the services will change, so it'll increase in some ways our ability to service a permit because we have, but, you know, it'll be Gardner-focused, and we'll have to have a new software implemented that will make everything paid for online, so it's modernizing in a sense, but also a, a change that, that residents will face, so we should have a discussion about it.
Okay.
Before we implement it. Uh, last week, Scanlon, our auditing firm, was here for five days, um, our staff worked, I can't tell you how hard to comply with their requests, everybody, uh, sent in everything. This is good, they're digging through our, our processes, uh, for FY seventeen, and, uh, they're gonna have some, uh, short-term or quick things that we can fix in the, the next month or so, and then the end management letter will come in the fall as part of that, um, FY twenty focus, so. That's good, just wanted to update you on that. We also need to sign.
That's two spots, but you, you the other one?
Basically, um, the scope that was already given to us in terms of what we're doing, and then that we're gonna pay them, and then we'll pay them.
So that's just an end.
Continuing on, uh, we employed, uh, we interviewed a candidate for our recycling assistant, that's our last vacancy right now, um, except for part-time seasonal at the DPW, so.
Did they have any luck with that, or?
They've only had one applicant, so we're, um, if anyone at home wants to do, um, to work with our DPW, it's a great job, it's a great part-time job for people, assisting with, uh, the beautification of the town, the cemetery, we're looking for, for folks.
What's the wage rate? Do you know, Fand?
Eleven.
Eleven?
Eleven. And, um, so we filled, we added our finance administrative assistant, Roberta, and then Kelly Parker, who is our, our inspectional services administrative assistant. Um, she, she interviewed with Joyce, and Joyce found her to be a good fit, adding three hours for her, uh, a week as our assistant town clerk. It works, they both work on that side of the office, the idea was to cover for Joyce when she's not there anyways, and, uh, Kelly's just one of our bright lights in the current hiring process, so it worked out well, we believe. Union negotiations, we've reached a tentative agreement with the DPW and the police, I'm, I'm happy to say, uh, we have an executive session tonight to discuss the details. Um, and they are, all agreed to meet at the middle of this month as well, uh, to give the proposal to their union bodies. That's where we are with that. Robert Liner, he came in, he was gonna do our, uh, boundary inspections. I attached an email to this.
It was too wet, too wet out. You said it was too wet out or something like that, when they went the first time, isn't it?
Too wet for paint?
Yeah, he said it was too wet to paint.
Yeah, he said.
Yeah, yeah.
He sent, he attaches a schedule.
Yeah, okay.
Inspection.
So, um, some of you had said you wanted to go, and I'm trying to make myself available to go as well, but at the least, he's gonna send some pictures, I just think it's a good people may, may or may not know this process, and it'd be good to show them.
Yeah.
Uh, we got a lot of important dates coming up, just wanted to call them out. Tomorrow night, there's the Q E M P coming for a public information session at the Senior Center. Twenty-first at your meeting. We're advertising a bylaw review, uh, for those who wanna come and talk to you about the bylaw changes. June fifth is the special and annual town meeting, June sixth has been selected as candidate tonight for the, um, for the election, for the annual town election, and then June twelfth is the annual town election. I'd like to thank the, the seniors for putting on candidates night on June sixth. I'm gonna be a great moderator, if anyone wants to see me moderate. Uh, and employee recognition, so, uh, this week I'd like to highlight treasurer collector Sandy Nason, uh, she really went above and beyond last week, so what she was dealing with, uh, taxes are due, people were coming in to do taxes, she was complying with every single request from the, um, from the audit team, and then also helped us hire our new finance administrative assistant all at once. Um, I can't say she wasn't a little stressed, but she, uh, performed all of them great, we hired an administrative assistant and did some training. Um, did everything the audit team wanted us to do and was able to collect taxes in, in what I believe is a very professional manner. So her persistence and success allowed us to, um, demonstrate how, how good our town, um, department heads are, um, just wanted to call out and thank her for professionalism.
Alright, excellent.
There's no questions, next we have some wage authorizations.
Sure.
First one is for Roberta, who was hired, Roberta, uh, Tevold, who was hired as our finance administrative assistant. The next one is.
Okay.
Behind, it should be underneath your letter.
Okay, got it.
The next one is Gerard Dupuy, he's coming up to six months, um, as one of our mark, our part-time mark drivers. We wanted to, to bring him up to, to where he should be. And then Kelly Parker's wage authorization is for her role as the assistant town clerk.
Alright, so I'll make a motion to approve the wage increase for Gerald Dupuy, Gerard Dupuy.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 I make a motion to waive the notification period for Roberta Tevo and Kelly Parker.
I'll second that.
Discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
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 I have one point. Oh, I do, it's just now it's lost. The, um, open law meeting complaint, open meeting law complaint, so we received a letter from the Attorney General's Office, Kathleen Meyer, who's a paralegal in Division of Open Government, just informing the, uh, person who made the complaint that it was received and that they're pending the action, so we know that it was turned in and it's pending.
Is this a new open meeting law complaint from town?
No, this is the one that's been pending since February. Just wanted to demonstrate that we are, uh, waiting for it and we have complied with everything
Okay.
in order to service that resident.
Okay. Okay, committee updates, uh, Q E M P task force, so the, as, as Ryan just said, tomorrow night here, six-thirty or six-thirty?
Six-thirty.
Yeah, over the Senior Center, there's gonna be, um, there's gonna be a meeting where the, the, um, the MRPC, CMRPPC group that we've contracted out with, with the five towns, is gonna come here to, uh, you know, just get feedback from people on, on everything. Uh, as I said over the course of this however long, Q E M P is the Quabin Educational Municipal Partnership that is not just looking at school stuff, it's looking at, uh, uh, business growth, it's looking at, um, uh, other ways that us as a five-town community can work together and share services, regionalization, all that sort of stuff. We had a meeting last week, week and a half ago, I can't remember exactly, it was just our, sort of our monthly meeting, and, um, I, I, you know, they sort of went through their presentation and, um, you know, they, I, they asked for feedback at the end, and I gave them sort of my honest feedback, um, which let, started off with, for several months leading up to that meeting, I had been nervous that we were wasting money. Because so much of the early discussions were discussions that we've had with the task force and we've had within the town over many, many years that had to do with, yes, these are the reasons why we don't have money, yes, these are, you know, all that sort of stuff, yes, the state's not funding us, you know, that, that sort of stuff, it's like, we know this group is treating things differently here. They are, um, you know, correct me if I'm wrong on some of these stats here, but there's actually gonna be a shared, um, position that's gonna have to do with business development within e- each of the five towns, that is gonna have services from each of the five towns with a centralized location, so things like that, where they're just, they're really sort of bringing things in, if I said that kinda right?
Oh, you did.
Okay, so, anyway, there's more, much more than just the, the school discussions going on there, and these guys are, they're, they're smart, and so I recommend anybody who can, who can make it tomorrow night to go there and sorta give your, your, your feedback in there, and we've extended their contract a little, um, so that they have adequate time to put together their report, but there's still several months left in the process, but, you know, I'm, I'm expecting some, some good ideas, um, so, we'll see.
Just to, just to add a little bit to that, the economic coordinator position that you're, you're talking about, so this, we're looking, we've met already as a group, uh, the, the town administrators are involved in this, looking to hire that person probably late July. And that person's full-time job will be to help the five communities develop their, their, their business development. So what I have, I'm gonna have a conversation about this in one of your meetings, but some preliminary thoughts I have is to, to build out our website in order to be more attractive to businesses that wanna come in, to review our bylaws, to make sure, and, and policies and procedures, and recommend them, to make sure that we're business-friendly. And then, um, to go to trade shows and other things to try and sell, um, Hubbardson, but just things that, that we can't do with our current staff. Um, I, I'm really excited about the position, and I think it'll lay a good groundwork, even coordinating, you know, the great effort the planning board is doing on the, the master plan with uh, ideas we have for development, what the board wants, so it's, it's a good thing, but just the Q E M P in general, uh, we've asked them for, Travis wants to experiment with some brine in the town to try and reduce money, we've asked them to find us partners in that, and they were moderately successful, but more successful was, we asked them, we wanted to use a roller, and rather than have Travis buy a roller, or ask to buy a roller, we said, how do you do it? They reached out to all the towns, we got five or six different answers on how they rent or how we could share them. or ask to buy a roller, we said, how do you do it, they reached out to all the towns, we got five or six different answers on how they rent or how we could share them. So now Travis is gonna be able to use with existing budget money a roller to try and um help with our our non paved roads and other things, so the partnership is is really good, it's a quick way for us to get information out from our partner communities and and share some resources.
And they've reached out further too, so not just, you know, sort of meeting with some townspeople, not just meeting with the schools, but they put together a funded, um part of the grant money, um business lunch slash dinner, I don't know if you knew that or not, where twenty, twenty-five different businesses showed up, you know, that they facilitated and and anyway, just getting people sort of in the same room, so they're going a little bit further than they're just saying it, they're actually set setting stuff up, there's a there's a pretty big team that's working on it, so, I mean, a hundred thousand dollars, so, pretty big grant. So anyway, that's it.
What's the meeting Wednesday at Barry Mills Restaurant, that's for economic development?
That's it, that's that too, yeah.
Okay, so it's one tomorrow night and then one Wednesday?
And I think there's already been one too.
Okay.
But yes, that's exactly that, I didn't realize it was that close.
What time is tomorrow's night?
Six thirty maybe.
Six thirty?
Alright, so town center committee, this is gonna take a minute, um I'm gonna break this into a number of different projects, I I just, we've had a meeting with Arthur Frost from Mass DOT, Travis, Ryan, me. That was it maybe? Oh, Mike from T E C, obviously, this is gonna be a pretty poor schematic, everybody, but we're just gonna have to deal with it, so um so as we know, this is south, north, town center, okay, south, north, town center, three different projects. Mass DOT approved projects, this is Elm sidewalk, this is to be constructed to the rec field, okay? So this is just what our town looks like from one line to the other up the Route sixty-eight corridor. As you've all seen, uh this works funded bid about to start, they got the road, the r- road signs up there, they've been clearing, and and that's gonna get going. And that's gonna take them this construction season, and that's where that's that's gonna go. Our northern section uh originally been bumped to two thousand twenty-one, it just so happens, it's the first time I'd actually seen the the sheets of paper that list all these projects on there, Arthur had it during our meeting. However, a project in Lemonster got bumped, uh Lemonster or Fitchburg, um got bumped, and there was like three and a half million dollars extra. And he said, hey, you know, why don't we put in two thousand nineteen, fiscal year two thousand nineteen, the northern section. However, we don't have quite enough, so we're gonna have to do something. And from what that do something is going to be is, it looks as though um we're going to have to bite off a little bit more of the town center project that heads towards reconstructing um work to the rec field. Cause originally, that northern section was gonna come all the way back down to Elm Street, does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
So um.
Williamsville.
Williamsville. So, long story short, uh we're not gonna have enough money with a hundred and fifty we're asking for in town meeting this year because some more engineering is gonna get needed with town center, we're gonna have to go back next year for fifty grand, we're waiting for the number now to find out how much more to ask for, and um that's it. So we're gonna have this whole corridor reconstructed in a few years, but it's it's gonna take one more ask for money in addition to this one fifty, because we just got three and a half million dollars given to us again, so, pretty sweet.
So this this summer, south will be done, next summer, north will be done?
Correct, and then all the way, the process of the design on town center is gonna be going along and getting into the queue.
And it'd be tremendous amount of pressure if north and south are done, put the center on.
Yeah, to connect the link.
And I just wanna call out that adding that uh the north side is is on that schematic, Travis goes to every one of those MPO meetings and advocates for the project, and I I truly believe that his advocacy is what got it, in addition to some other great factors, getting it bumped up.
That is pretty awesome.
Mm.
So that's that, and bylaw review committee, I don't have anything else.
There, that work is in the warrant.
Okay.
Is parking at the rec field part of that north program?
Meaning additional parking?
Meaning there's not enough parking for all of the cars that uh use the rec field.
Yeah, it's it's not really.
That that's real, that's a real safety issue
Yeah.
that hopefully will never happen, but you know, there's uh I I I know when we have field day, they allow parking in the
Yeah.
in the back corner, I don't know whether somebody should be looking at that and deciding whether that could be a lot more permanent parking because you got cars all over the place dropping off kids and.
You do that more than once or twice, you're gonna start making a mess though, you know?
Oh, w- well, you'd yeah, you'd have to make it parking, you'd have to bring in, you know.
Well, oh, oh, are you talking about where the the barn is?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, on the other side of the barn, that big field there. You'd you know, you'd have to take off all the sod and bring in gravel and make it a gravel parking lot.
I think it's mostly gravel, cause they filled that water hole in, yeah, I mean, it's wet there, though.
It is wet.
But they hauled gravel in from the old pit near uh Calico. And filled that, remember that water hole that never held water? Yeah.
Oh, there was a fire pond there?
Yeah, and it was never full.
Oh, that's why, I never knew why there was just a random fire pond.
Yeah.
Piped it out.
But that's why it's wet, because when Jeff Hackler filled that in originally, he asked the highway at the time if they would pay for the pipe, cause all the culverts from the um, not all of them, but there's quite a few that were set in the field drained into that thing, that's why it's wet there, because there's nowhere for it to go, cause they never approved the pipe to connect it to the culvert out the other road.
One other thing to add to that is, if we're now gonna be adding some reconstruction of a multi-use path to this project that goes up to the rec field along with the roadway reconstruction, the complete streets grant that we just got for two hundred and thirty thousand?
Yeah, two hundred and thirty-ish.
Two hundred and thirty-ish thousand, um it wouldn't make sense for us to build the sidewalk, and then so anyway, we may try to build Elm Street sidewalk instead with that money, we're waiting here back from the state to see if it's okay if we've transferred projects, so.
So they're gonna run a sidewalk from, say, GFA all the way up?
Yep.
Nice.
So Mass DOT, I mean, they're really invested in this, and and I'm, you know, he lives in Barry, so he knows the area extremely well. And, you know, he's even thinking, he's like, look, I think you guys, I, you know, he sort of decides on some stuff too. I I think you guys, it's not a bad idea to have that multi-use path go all the way up to, you know, the interface of where the the pallet company is, cause if you've got a senior center or public safety, you're gonna be able to go straight across the street to it eventually, so they're even thinking longer term than, and you know, I'm sitting there saying, oh, I just had three, three, three times rejected, that's tough, but still, they're 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 not just they're really trying to work it too, you know, so, um I don't know.
And we may be able to put parking there someday at the uh site there for, public safety site there.
True.
Yeah, that's not a bad idea.
To get the overflow from the rec field, you know.
Right. Mm-hmm.
Okay, so minutes?
So I noticed uh I'm listed as present at these minutes, but I was not at last week's meeting, so.
Oh, okay, sorry, I'll change that. I usually keep the same template, so I probably didn't.
I'm looking through, I'm like, I don't remember any of these things you've been talking about.
You you didn't, you didn't go home this night and watch us?
I'm sorry.
Alright. I'll make a motion to approve the minute to April twenty-third.
I'll second the motion.
Discussion, all in favor?
Yes.
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 I'm staying.
Oh, business, anybody got anything else uh wanna bring up?
We did, we discussed it, but the uh the issuance of the seventy-five thousand for the town Hubbardson versus Melanson Heath and Company, so that's, that check is in our possession. Um and sort of conclusion to that check.
Alright. Okay, uh public press, question, answer, anything?
Just uh who who made all the changes to the uh to the bylaws?
They had a bylaw review committee.
So Joyce was on it, Vin was on, I don't remember all the members offhand, but there was a bunch of them, there was a lot of them.
There was a bunch, it was like seven or nine.
It was a committee.
It was a big committee.
It was.
Joyce is still over there till eight.
And they all got reviewed by town council.
Yes. Excellent, thank you.
Is that flag up, they fixed that yet?
Not to my knowledge, no.
I know it's too, it's too muddy there for a while.
And I have to say, I like um Katie, I mean, like the flags keep changing, right, you got the the Hubbardson Fun Fest, whatever it is now, and then.
Yeah, you have to put some uh brighter letters on it, you can't read those ones up there.
She said that when she came in today.
Yeah.
She showed up, it made it look bright when she came into the office.
Yeah, you can't see them up on the pole.
She would change it to red next time, so.
But you would think that the flag company, when you're building, when you're putting it together, would say.
How how you putting these things?
Right, right, this would, this would work better, though. But that's what happened when the two fiftieth committee did the green signs, is you can't even see the businesses on them, but that was what was the color scheme recommended by the the manufacturer.
Hmm, it was probably cheaper if I'm gonna make that color.
These ones I noticed, though, he's coming into town.
Yeah, no, they're.
Um can we just, uh Ryan, on this this final closure, this is from the um former tax collector settlement. And just so, you know, did you know that what this is, the seventy-five thousand? It's from the um
Melanson and Heath.
Melanson and Heath, which was the auditor.
Yeah, so we filed two lawsuits, one was against Cindy.
And they settled out of court and settled for money?
And then, yeah, and then one was Melanson and Heath, so they were both settled out of court.
Nice.
So that was good, so that chapter should be closed now.
Another seventy-five thousand.
So they just went back into the general fund.
It was just a, for the record, it's, it was a stipulation of dismissal. So that was what it formally was called.
Yeah, so there'll be no further income in the future.
No.
For our law.
No, we we were able to uh, we came up with a settlement from Melanson Heath for seventy-five thousand. Um and then there was a settlement with the pension board for fifty percent of her contributions, which was about twenty-five, twenty-six thousand.
Only fifty percent?
And then.
Was that was that ruled by judge?
That was, if I recall back, that was, the judge wasn't even gonna, I think the judge indicated that they they wouldn't even like, he wouldn't even order that, so if we can settle that out of court, cause he wasn't gonna give any more than we already got.
And no liens were ever placed on uh on assets that were bought with town money?
No, the, again, the judge indicated that they would not be placing liens uh from their end for the for the criminal part of it, um.
But the town didn't have a right to do so?
We did, but we were in like sixth position. Um it was already, the house was already being foreclosed on, it had a mortgage, another mortgage. Um the the we had no shot of getting any money.
It was in more than one name.
It was in a couple of names, it was in her husband's name also, um actually had a homestead agreement, even though she signed the homestead agreement after the fact. Um the judge was not willing to break the homestead agreement, he made that pretty clear, so we can only go after her fifty percent, and there was already two, two other lien holders that were foreclosing on the home.
Right, because he wasn't implicated.
So we had no shot for.
So the home has been foreclosed on though?
I don't know the the disposition of it, but it was uh, it was in the process of foreclosure at the time.
Thank you. Okay. Uh alright, anything else, public press, no? Okay, well, we've got a couple of executive sessions items that we're gonna be getting to.
Great to see all you guys again, nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you, next.
Have a good night.
Ed, welcome back.
Yeah, yeah.
See you later.
Yeah.
See you soon.
So I'm gonna recuse myself, although the police are first, and you guys are just assigned, I'm gonna just recuse from the executive sessions.
Have a good night.
So it's the the DPW.
Gotcha.
Alright, gotcha. So, good night, guys, we'll see you next time.
Good night.
So, um.
I just forgive me, I don't know how these work here, so are we good to talk?
Uh so here's, the way it's gonna go is is that someone's gonna have to make a motion to go into executive session pursuant to the reasons that are shown here. If the chair declares, and in that motion, um uh to um not come out into, to 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 not come back out into open session, did I say that correctly? Okay, so.
So I'll make.
Do you wanna stumble through that?
Yeah, so I'll make the motion to enter into executive session if the chair so declares.
I declare?
Pursuant to general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, purpose number two, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, DPW Teamsters Contract. And pursuant to general law, section thirty, uh see section, see thirty-eight, section twenty-one, purpose number two to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining session or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, police, New England Police Benevolent Association Incorporated, Local zero-nine-two, and not to come back into um open session.
Uh, okay.
I'll second that.
Pat?
Um.
Roll call, Pat?
Oh, yes.
Dan, yes, 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 okay, alright, so executive session?
Shut it down.